Here.
Mrs. Bowlen.
Derek.
Mrs. Collins. Dr. Flowers. Mr. Leary.
Here.
Dr. Power.
Here.
Ms. Winslow.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have Mrs. Bowlen lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand up.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
You may be seated.
We are going to switch things around tonight, and we're going to move the public comment to now. So I'm going to ask everybody, it's three minutes, and if you come up to the podium, please introduce yourself with your name and your address. Thank you.
Do you have a motion? Colleen Turner.
My name is Colleen Turner. I live at Tan Hazard Street in Newport. I'm here tonight because I know that the budgetary considerations were very dire this year, but I just wanted to express my concerns for some of the side effects of the budget decisions. Currently at Rogers, we've lost a lot of staff to lay off. And in my department, the history department, we lost two teachers. And based on the schedule for the fall, we lost classes that had students enrolled in it. Youth in the law will not run. Economics for entrepreneurs will not run. Sports and American history will not run. A section of AP Psychology will not run. A section of Intro Psychology will not run. And a section of AP US will not run. And I just want to make that something that is not just ignored. Maybe the public isn't aware, parents and students, but there are not many options for students when you don't have some of those popular electives. So therefore, those students will be in learning centers, study hall. So I know that we're coming close to the start of the year. And if there's any possibility of bringing back teachers, the impact is real. The money, I know is money, but this absolutely directly impacts the students of Newport. And I would hope that you would consider that. Thank you.
Kathleen Brady, 52, Lilac Lane, Portsmouth. Dear members of the Newport School Committee and Superintendent Jermaine, I come before you once again with the hopes that you will do everything in your power to reinstate the school counselor position at Pell. I know this could look self-serving because I am the school counselor at Pell, but the only reason I am up here tonight is so that I can continue to support the children and families of Pell. They are my sole motivation for speaking tonight. I believe that if you saw what I see, heard what I hear, and could witness how much I am able to provide instantaneous support to prevent things from getting much worse, we wouldn't be here tonight discussing this. But I am not one to talk about what I do. I just do my job to the very best of my ability and take care of the kids at Pell School. I protect the students and families confidentiality, and I keep the issues I address close to the vest. One Newport. I have always loved that theme, but I also love the sound of one team, where we all come together and do what's right for the children and families of Newport. After all, isn't that why we are all here? Please be the heroes in this situation and save the school counselor position at Pell. I also just wanted to mention that I received many letters today. People that, parents that wanted to be here tonight, but it was a little bit too last minute, and they had conflicts with their kids. So please check your email because I know they are sending them. Thank you very much.
Becky Dewitt, 27, Sheffield Ave. Good evening. I'm here to ask you to reinstate our school counselor, not as a luxury, but as a necessity. A counselor is a safety net for students facing anxiety, bullying, family challenges, or crises they may not share with anyone else. They help kids feel seen, safe, and supported, which directly impacts attendance, behavior, and grades. Right now, without the role, you're asking teachers who are already stretched thin to juggle emotional crises alongside teaching. That's not fair to them, and it's not giving our students the focused care they deserve. The truth is simple. Healthy students learn better. When we provide emotional and social support, we set them up for academic success and a stronger future. This isn't about funding a position. It's about standing by our values and showing we believe in the whole child, not just their test scores. Please bring back the counselor. Our students are counting on you. I also want to say that, once again, I've sent an email, sent to your, I did get a response from you, Jim, thank you for that, on the second email. The excuse of it's in your spam at this point is infuriating to me. As an educator, I get the blocks, I get it, which is why I have a habit of checking my spam. So I'm asking you personally, not just for myself, but I'm sure there's many other parent emails that are in your spam, if you can please make it a habit to check your spam at least once a week. Thank you.
Jasmine Valdez, 246 Park Home. I'm here as a parent to speak on the school counselor position. My daughter has been at Pell for three years, and having Ms. Brady by her side has been tremendous. She has helped my daughter through, her dad was deployed this year. He's in the US Army. This year coming up, I am expecting my second child, so she is going through a bunch of changes. And I think hearing her say this week to me, "Mom," with her eyes full of water, "Mom, do you know Ms. Brady's not coming back next year?" Completely shattered me. My daughter went through bullying. My daughter went through so many changes coming to Pell. And if it was not for Ms. Brady, I probably would have pulled her from Pell. I feel like my daughter was not heard and was not seen. But I feel like with Ms. Brady by her side, she felt better. We were able to move the classroom that she was in. We were able to move it with the support that I had for Ms. Brady. I feel like I wasn't alone. She didn't let things just go. She helped me through it all. And as a parent, I felt more comfortable sending my kid to school knowing that she had someone she could trust, someone that she could rely on. And I understand the teachers do an amazing job, but these teachers are balancing jobs of many people in one. And I truly think getting rid of the school counselor position would be a downfall to the school. And I was shell shocked when my daughter, nine years old, told me. I had no idea this position was even up, this was even happening. I took it upon myself, I had let other parents know. Some of the parents who know Ms. Brady and have built a relationship didn't even know as well. So I feel like a lot of things were on the hush about this, and I just really need you guys to consider it and just take these kids into consideration. Not us parents, the kids. The kids need her. And I think sending them back to school on September 3rd is going to be a shell shock to them without seeing her. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Alioki, 113, Van Zant Ave. Good evening, committee members. Most of you know who I am by now and why I'm here, so I'll not repeat my story other than asking to please not eliminate the only school counselor we have at Pell, specifically Kathleen Brady, whom many are relying on her being here this school year, both because she's amazing at what she does, but also because she has formed strong relationships with both the children and the families. I came across a quote, which I feel at this moment is very warranted. It says, "The only thing at the end of the day that you're going to regret are not the mistakes you make, because you can make your own peace with them and move on. What you're going to regret are the moments that you did not take." I am asking you officially and on record to please take this moment and please ask the Newport City Council for the money to fund this position, since it's not in our budget, for the 2025-2026 school year. There is never regret doing what is right for our children of Newport. Thank you.
John Torcena, 16, Briarwood Ave, Middletown. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I was born and raised in Newport, Rhode Island, having attended Newport Public Schools at every level. I am here to urge you to reinstate the school counselor position at Pell, because in today's world, this is not just an extra service, but an essential one. We all know the world our children are growing up in is more complex than ever. They face pressures never imagined, we never imagined at their age. Academic demands, social challenges, constant digital connection, in a world that can feel unpredictable. The pressures don't just affect grades, they shape confidence, relationships, and mental health. At this age, students are only beginning to scratch the surface of who they are and how they manage their emotions. Having a trusted, trained counselor in the building gives them a safe space to talk, problem solve, and build coping skills before small challenges turn into major concerns. A few years ago, I started a company called No Solo, which stands for Not Alone. My company aims to cultivate a community of support and connection using fashion as a vehicle to spark dialogue and promote mental well-being. I was fortunate to have the opportunity to come to Pell this past year and present this message to the entire student body. And while I've done these types of presentations at many schools before, Pell was the first elementary school to be involved. And the results were nothing short of inspiring. The session was tailored to the students' age groups, using stories, visuals, and strategies to help kids understand feelings, how to manage them, and how to support their own family and friends. You could see the impact in real time with students nodding along, raising their hands to share, and connecting what they were learning with their own experiences. Not only that, but the outreach from students and parents on the positive impact it left on them was exactly what we were striving for. Being invited back during reading week a few months later, at the request of many students, made me feel like we were really connecting on a deeper level. And none of this would have been a reality if it weren't for Kathleen Brady, who spearheaded the entire project and fully understood how important it was for these kids to hear this message. And I'm eager to continue this partnership with Pell. These moments plant seeds that shape healthier coping skills, stronger peer connections, and better self-awareness for years to come. But these seeds need constant care to grow. A one-time presentation can light the sparkness, but a counselor ensures that that spark becomes a steady flame, helping kids feel supported, safe, and capable as they learn and grow. Without a counselor, teachers are left trying to fill the gap. And while they deeply care, their primary role is to teach. Counselors are uniquely trained to address mental health concerns, mediate conflicts, and connect families to community resources, freeing up teachers to focus on academics while ensuring students get the specialized support that they need. Every student deserves to feel seen, heard, and supported. Reinstating a counselor position at Pell is not just a line item in a budget, it's an investment in the well-being, safety, and future success of our children. Our community strength is built on the health of our students, so let's give them the tools, the guidance, and the care that they deserve right here where it matters most. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our kids.
Thank you very much to everybody who came and spoke. Next up on our agenda is 2.1, which is the Rogers High School AP Performance.
All right, hello, everyone. I'm Mike Monahan, Assistant Principal at Rogers High School. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about our Advanced Placement Program results from May of 2025. Just very briefly to make sure everyone understands what Advanced Placement is. Advanced Placement is a program created by the College Board, the same company that has created the SAT and the PSAT. They do a lot of college-related examinations. Advanced Placement, there are several courses that have a scope and sequence that culminate with the AP exam that is held in May. All students that participate in AP take the exams at the same time, which makes it something nationally and even internationally, apples to apples for college admissions folks to be able to understand what that course looks like across the board. They understand AP. Other courses can vary from school to school. So it makes it a powerful tool for students to engage in college-level rigor while in high school, and there's potential to earn college credits. So that's what the AP program is, and we have several students who participate. So this first slide here, you can keep it on that slide. Back, back.
Kathy, do you want me to do that?
Okay. So this is just some information about the students that participated in Advanced Placement this year. Juniors and seniors, 117 students took 323 AP exams. Approximately 39% of our students take one or more AP exams each year. We, some schools have requirements for enrolling in an AP course and taking the AP exam. In Newport, we do not. Newport Public Schools pays for students. Other school districts have students pay for the exams. They cost around $100. We sponsor the students taking the exams so that we allow students to take the course because it's a good option, because it's helpful in getting students prepared for college. And there are lots of studies that show that students who take one or more AP exams during high school are more likely to be successful when they go to college. All right, this next slide just shows our percent of AP students who score a 3 or higher. So the AP exam that students take in May, it's about a three-hour-long exam, each one of them. And they're scattered throughout the first two weeks of May. When you take the exam, you get a score of 1 to 5. 5 being superior mastery, and 1 is the lowest score that you can achieve. This chart shows the percentage of our students who scored a 3 or higher each year, going back to 2017. I will note that 2020, there's a bump up. That was the COVID year. The test was completely different. Students took them at home. It was abbreviated. They have since made an online version, but it's now taken in a standardized environment during the school day. So you can see, since 2021, we've had slight increases each year with our number of students, our percentage of students scoring at least 1, 3, or higher. The next slide will show the numbers corresponding to that chart. Now, the total students each year, the total number of exams each year taken, and then the percentage of students that scored at least a 3. And again, 2021 to 2025, we have seen some improvement among the students who have scored a 3, at least 1, 3 or higher. As well as, you can look at 2021, we had 117 students take the exam. As we, how do I get this out of here? As we did in 2025, 117. Difference being, we went up from 287 exams taken to 323. And we maintained that, actually, we almost doubled our achievement of 3 or higher with the same number of students taking many more exams. So there are some improvements going on. Yeah, this, we just tried to capture all of the data from all the AP courses and exams that we've held since 2021, or since 2017, pardon me. The AP program that holds all the data, it only holds five years' worth of data, so we are missing some information prior to 2021. We captured what we could here, just to show course by course in this slide and in the next. We currently run 12 AP courses and exams. And this slide is a continuation of the AP courses and exams that we run, along with total number of exams per course and the number of students who earned a 3 or higher. That's the percentage, the third column is the percentage of students earning a 3 or higher in each course. And then, we broke down our information into different demographic areas. This first one, some students, some families qualify like they do for free and reduced lunch, the same criteria is used to determine whether a student gets a fee reduction on their AP exam. This past year, and about 70% of our students qualify for free or reduced lunch, and therefore, a free reduction. As you can see, more students do take the APs that don't qualify for fee reductions, and they score a little better. We do have quite a few students who do qualify. And I think we'll see in the next chart that that number has been increasing each year. And their scores are a little lower, but improving. This next slide has information about male versus female test takers over the last five years. The numbers vary from year to year in total exams and average scores. The females tend to take more, but there have been times when the males have taken as many exams, and their scores, the females score a little bit higher. But you can see that the males perform closely to the level of the females. And this next slide has, it separates out into race and ethnicity, along with their scores. And then this chart includes the last five years of demographic participation and success. Again, showing the total number of exams and the mean score. There were some questions about other options. There is a Rhode Island RIDE-supported program called the All Course Network, or the ACN. It varies what they offer. A lot of their offerings are online, but they are free to students. This coming year, they will be offering five online AP courses. We will be offering in-school, in-person, three of those five, but that is another option. We also subscribe to a program called Virtual High School. We have 25 seats each semester for students. If a student were, they, and VHS has all the courses, all the AP offerings typically, space, providing that there's space. These are taught by other high school teachers throughout the country. You have a real teacher. It's just an online platform. If you take an AP course through Virtual High School, it's two semesters. So it takes up a seat each semester. They have other offerings that sometimes a student can't fit something in their regular schedule, and they'll rely on VHS because it has the flexibility of being an online provider. So our program strengths, we have open access. Because we sponsor the AP exam cost, you know, that allows financial equity, we have broad participation. Almost 40% of our students took at least one last year, one AP exam. We're tracking demographic subgroups, though we know we need to work on supporting all students to be able to take APs. We are paying attention to that, and we have some external options as well. Things that we know that we need to deal with, that we need to improve on. We have open access, but not everyone necessarily knows. So each year, we have to make sure that students know. We need students to understand that they need to work hard so that they're prepared to deal with the challenges and the rigor of advanced placement programming, and that there's potential for earning college credit. There's potential for catching the eye of admissions representatives from colleges and things like that. And this is something that doesn't just start at the beginning of your AP year. You know, every year, we need to work on developing lessons, working on implementing our curriculum with fidelity. And we have started to work with Common Planning and teachers, working on lesson internalization, which is a form of really getting a deep understanding of what a lesson entails and where students might struggle, and what kinds of scaffolds and supports need to be implemented so that all students get that information. You know, and when you recognize that there's a gap, how do we tackle that gap without going backwards and remediating too much and sticking to the college level or the high school level standards? In doing that work, just talking about it is one thing, but we are developing look-forers, things that show signs of this level of rigor happening, and doing walkthroughs where we discuss and look for trends to, you know, ensure that we're improving and that what we're talking about and what we're trying to do is happening. And we do believe that the more comfortable we get with this and the more that we team up and partner and support our staff, you know, we're going to continue to see those trends that show improvement. And we have a ways to go, but, you know, we're excited to continue this work.
Questions? Mrs. Collins?
Couple of questions. Did you get my email today that was asking how many fours and, oh, sorry? Could you give me an idea of how many students score fours and fives? Sure. We have, from the total exams from this year, 323 exams. We had 33 students score a 4 and 15 students score a 5. We also had 69 students score a 3. And so many colleges take the 3, some take the 4, all of them take a 4 or a 5, some still take a 3. So 3 is considered by College Board passing. So 69 3s, 33 4s, and 15 5s. Not too many colleges take 3s anymore. I don't think URI does.
Yeah, they do.
They do?
Yes.
Could you tell me which classes scored the 4s and 5s the most? Which courses? English Composition, US History and Chemistry. Chemistry? Yep, Chemistry.
Okay, great.
Without being fully prepared to talk about, those are
Those are my rough numbers.
There are different amounts of students who took the tests too, but
Right. How the advanced work is going. How, how are kids introduced to the class, the offering and what to expect? Is there some sort of an assembly? Do they meet with their counselor? How do they learn about? Because it seems like a lot of kids are, are taking them, but I don't know if they're really engaged in the learning, they're just taking them, because how does that all work? How do you decide what kids take what classes?
Well, annually, we have a course selection, a series of course selection meetings during class time where counseling staff go into the classroom rooms and talk to each student, talk to the group.
Like a homeroom situation or?
We've used the history classes at the high school.
Okay.
It needs to be a course that everybody takes so that we make sure we don't miss anyone. And then we do have some special populations that will, that will pull.
Do parents get any information sent home or online?
Yep, we have a course selection form that the students are given to complete, bring home, get signed and return.
I think of course catalog as well.
We have a course catalog online and we have, and we, we put out into our announcements that this is going on. It usually happens in, right at the beginning of semester two.
Yeah, one thing, when we were talking apples to apples, I, I was thinking about this. A lot of the southern schools, like in Atlanta area, they're starting already.
Yep.
So those kids have about six weeks almost, you know, on, ahead of our kids, but they all take the class, the test at the same time. So what do you do to ramp up? I mean, is there a way of accelerating the, the course so that the kids are getting the whole course before the exam?
In some cases, in many cases, the, the teachers will assign some summer work. They're always asking for their rosters, for their rosters prior to the end of the school year so they can get in touch and get, get a leg up there.
That would be good if all kids got some of that ahead of time, so they can start reading ahead of time.
Yeah, Massachusetts leads the charge and they start when we start, so it's possible. And we watch them.
I just have to say, kudos to the English Composition and Literature teacher, whoever that may be, excellent score, 89%, that's really great.
Pretty outstanding.
Also African-American history as well.
That was the first year that that was provided, first year teacher for that, it was great.
But I have to say, I don't know why we're continuing to offer stats. The kids are just not prepared. If you look at the last five years, we've barely made 3% of, you know, that, why are we, why are we doing it if they're not prepared for it? It's really devastating. I just know from a personal situation that happened with my husband over this, just last week, speaking to a child, devastating. And they open up these scores in July by themselves on their phones and they go, oh my God, I got, you know, I didn't pass that, I didn't pass this. And my husband said to the kid that he was talking to, he was volunteering at the Jazz Festival, he said, "Don't worry, you weren't the only one, nobody passed." But they need to know that. It's really kind of cruel, because this kid was bummed. I mean, he was, his, Mike said, his body language was really sad. So, but he pumped up once he knew he wasn't the only one that didn't pass. So that, that to me seemed glitchy. The kids are opening the portal by themselves. Just, that was just aside.
Thanks. Well, the, the thing is, Dad, we know we struggle in math. That's not, that's something we've been working on that we need to continue to work on.
That's more than struggling though, that's consistent failure.
The information shows that just taking a test, just taking the course, it
Do we offer honors courses that they would be better prepared to take and have more opportunity to?
Yeah, we have a lot of offerings. We have a lot of options.
Yeah, I just think that stats AP, man, we're not doing it.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Thank you. I'm looking at, obviously, I've never seen any of these tests. The testing style or mode, are the students, I mean, obviously, you're not going to give them the tests that they're taking formally, but is, is it any time are they taught how to take the test? Okay, I'm getting ahead now. Because obviously, the English Composition has to be a prompt given, I suppose, and then they have to write that. So it's, it could be not as objective as some other areas. I mean, like math would be, I was gonna say, math is kind of, it's right or wrong, but that's, I'm being too simple in that. Or science or some of these others, but I'm just wondering if the, the, the style of testing, the mode of testing is, is any time put into it so that the kids, I'm going to be like, you know, hit on the head the day they're taking the test. These are all computerized?
Yes, they're all online, yes.
All online, okay. So they're kind of, they're used to that, I suppose, in a lot of other classes too.
There's a, so the Advanced Placement has a whole, it's called AP Classroom and it's an online platform that, that teachers use, that has all kinds of samples. All AP teachers have to create, you know, a syllabus and, and model their curriculum after this exam, it's all normed.
So, so the levels
So it's not, it's not a shot in the dark. They know what they're, they know what they're working toward. They do change from year to year. It may feel like what people sometimes call teaching to the test, but it's a solid test. It's a very rigorous test that measures their mastery in, in some specific areas that are college level.
They're gonna hit them with a totally different style of teaching or something that they could never have been exposed to. That's always my concern with a lot of the
But the thing is, it, it covers a ton of material and there just isn't enough time in a school year to cover it all in person during class. So it relies on some independence, which
And of course, when we're looking at those bar graphs of how they were, you know, for each year, well, those are different sets of students.
Yep.
You know, I mean, if you follow them along, then you see the individual students' progress or plateauing and hopefully not sliding back. But, and even with your numbers, when you start to look at your mean scores, yeah, if you only have a few kids taking it, that's not as reliable. I don't want to say valid, but not as reliable as when you have a whole bunch. Okay, then answer my questions, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Just a quick question, I want to know if we anticipate having enough spots for all the students who want to take an AP class this coming school year? You know, there were some budget cuts.
I mean, we're offering the same offerings. When there are fewer sections, there can be a ripple effect that can lead to, you know, if you don't have, if you have two sections instead of three or one instead of two, you have one chance and, and then you got to start making choices. So there's potential for kids to not get everything they want.
But we do have those alternative options for them like VHS and ACN, should that happen to someone?
Mrs. Collins?
Just to follow up on that, the VHS and the ACN, the credits that they earn go towards their graduation requirements?
Yes.
Good. And, and how, how do they learn about that? Does everybody know that, that is an option for them? Again, you know, communicating the availability of these extra offerings, I think we need to buck up a little bit?
We can always do a better job. There's information in the program studies.
Maybe even putting something in the newspaper or, you know, writing a press release that explains, hey, it's time to sign up. Because I think the more parents know about it, the more the kids are encouraged to do it. I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Leary?
A couple of follow-up, follow-up questions. The, Mrs. Collins, first of all, how many kids in the Virtual High School went in last year, AP?
Two took APs. There were several others who took other classes, but two.
How many kids took, of the 25 seats available, how many were the?
I don't have the exact number.
Six kids, seven kids, more?
Yeah. There, there are several kids, we don't have an exact estimate or exact number, sorry. Several students took a, took VHS, we can get that information.
How were the results with those several students?
Well, there are two who took VHS. I don't know off the top of my head.
I was just curious, because you have a national person teaching the course, you said?
Well, it's a teacher. We have a teacher that teaches a VHS course that allows us to get the seats. And there are other teachers in other places that our students and other students are taking, you know, they're just regular teachers at other districts.
Be interested how the results compared with the ones of students that were in school. One last question. How were the, and there's a follow-up, I might have missed it. How were the math results? And how many kids took math AP tests?
So we have pre-calculus, pre-AP, or pre-AP pre-calculus. I think we had like 40% get, we, 25 students take the pre-calculus. The calculus, we had 14 and statistics 23.
How many got three or above?
10. 20. 20 guys. It's, it's in there.
Yeah, it's in the back.
I think, in the backup, we got an itemized list of, of every score for every, every course.
I think it was approximately 20 for the math ones, Mr. Leary.
20 kids out of all the ones that took it to the three?
Or above in the three math classes offered. It is in, it is in the backup.
23 took statistics, zero passed.
Zero passed?
Yes, this is
But again, I think it's important to remember that even students taking an AP course are benefiting from that. They're, they're more likely to succeed in a four-year college, they're more likely or as likely to do as well, if not better than other students in college because they've had that experience. So although we want to see our students getting a three or more, I'm happy to see the number of students taking AP classes. I think that has to be a strength for us to, to focus on as well. Not that we're not focusing on the three or higher, please don't misunderstand, but I just want to make sure that we recognize that that's a feat in itself.
So, I lied, one more question. So, evidence should be student-focused and outcome-focused. And it seems like the results, even though somewhat better over the last few years, are still not that good. Is there, is there a way of changing that by doing something different?
Yeah, I think that the common planning, time, working, having teachers work together. In some cases, we have more than one teacher teach the same AP course so they can partner up and share ideas. We want to do more of that. We want to get teachers observing teachers more because there's a lot you can learn from each other and, and a lot of teaching in the past has been done in isolation. And we have way too much knowledge to keep them isolated from one another. So we're trying to be more strategic about working together and developing each other. Mrs. Bowlin?
Okay, a comment and a question. I think everybody needs to remember or to know that in other cities in Newport or in Rhode Island, they only allow kids who have certain grades or certain potential to take these classes. So they have much better rates of passing. But as, you know, you just spoke, our kids have a much better chance, you know, going to, having that experience of being able to take it. Like, wait, me? You think I can do it? So it challenges them. So this is a really good thing and we'll never have the results that they might have in, in a more restrictive district, you know? That's one. And then the second thing is, I know some years we've had to skip offering something so that, because we didn't, you know, have enough kids or, are we having to do this this year? And if so, are we letting kids know ahead of time when there's not going to be something offered?
We were able to run Chemistry and Biology, that was the one that we named a few years ago. The, the only other one, AP Computer Science A and AP Computer Principles, we alternate. That's the AOIT group usually takes them and it works nicely. We don't have enough teacher to teach both at once and they can alternate, do one junior, one senior year. So we haven't had that, an issue resulted from that. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I was just going to say that I would imagine that the teachers are saying, you know, encouraging the, the students. And again, even with the younger ones, you know, is this going to affect our grades? But it is on your, as we used to say, permanent record cards. And that they, that they know that the job well done is going to help them in the future and, and not just, well, I'm taking the test and I'm done. That is their role in this too, so. But to, and you never know, some young student who might not be, you know, an A-plus student, all of a sudden, something clicks in one of these courses, so just keep trying.
All right, next up on our agenda is our consent agenda. So we've tried to do something a little different tonight, we tried to restructure our agenda to kind of move things a little bit, along a little bit quicker. So we're going to make a motion, Mrs. Bowlin, is to approve the consent agenda and then what we're going to do is pull out any agenda items that we wanted to discuss. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bowlin.
Okay, so my motion is to accept the following consent agenda items. 3.1, 3.3, 3.7 and 3.8.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So first up is 3.2.
So, 3.2, this is a motion to accept the invoices and requisitions and I'm going to recuse myself.
You can still make the motion.
I can still make, I made the motion.
Are you in the second? Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Number?
Next up is 3.5.
3.4, right?
Oh, 3.3?
3.3, we did that one already, we're now at 3.4.
Okay, 3.4.
3.4, this is a motion to accept the expenditures and revenue, revenue and restricted grants report.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Winslow? Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, school committee members. Thanks for having me. There's a lot to cover today. So, I'll, I'll start with the prior year closing. As of July 26, the information I shared of having a modest surplus of around $60,000 was accurate. However, there was a material retiree health insurance expense that was posted on 8/7 last week, last Thursday, due to a correcting entry and it reversed, which reversed the prior period posting error. That's got a negative impact to our bottom line. So we are looking to actually end the year in a deficit of approximately $336,000. That's as of Friday. Then, in the next section of the financial outlook for the 2025-26 school year, we've got some really material concerns from my perspective. We don't have enough money budgeted for out-of-district tuition costs, which will, will, will cause significant issues. There was also a change to the state aid amount after our approved budget in June. The net effect was approximately $136,000 together. That is how I arrive at the projected deficit of 1.5 million for the current school year. Forecast. It is just a forecast at this point, based on the information I know today. Yes, please.
Does that include the kindergarten teacher that we are probably going to have to add?
It, it does include the added kindergarten. It does.
How do we reconcile this?
Well, that's a million dollar question, sir, that we've been racking our brains on for a while, I think. I mean, they made a recommendation, I think we should freeze any positions that aren't currently filled and required by state law. I just think it's prudent at this time to do that, until we identify additional revenue streams.
Speak up a little bit, please.
So can I, so we're not on the kindergarten position. We're going to wait and see who shows up before we bring somebody in for that position, am I correct?
Superintendent?
We actually need that.
We already know. We already have the enrollments. And we already have more students registered than we are able to have in our class sizes. So we already know, I believe at the last time, it was, we were eight to nine students firmly enrolled. We had another, I had it in my update to you, I can't off the top of my head. We had another four that have started the paperwork. Or, and then we have another six that we know that are coming in from two of our pre-Ks. So that in itself is going to fill a class.
So what's that total?
I have to look that up.
Anyone else who's looking at it?
I have some questions too, if I could wait about a rush.
I think the comment's going to be, do we need six? Or are we going to end up needing seven? That's more the question.
That is my concern, yes. So we had declining enrollment. We looked at the projections. We have the enrollment projections, which have been pretty on target. And we appear to be having more enrollments than we expected for kindergarten.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Powers, but I think what he's trying to say is, why don't you wait to make your kids get there? Because some people sign up, they don't show up. And I'm sure you've done your work, but obviously last year, we had five teachers extra in the building. If you wait, bring a substitute in. And then September, if they're all there, then bring the person back.
Mrs. Bowlen?
So kindergarten is the one place you can predict. You have to enroll your child in order to have them come here. It's not like third or fourth grade where people can just take their kid out and go somewhere. So I think of all the grades, kindergarten is the most predictable. If that many people have signed up, the chances are that many people are showing up. Is that correct?
Correct. And so to answer Dr. Power, so opening that sixth classroom, we have six incomplete packets and six students we know that have not started the registration part process. So there are 12 seats left at this time in that kindergarten, if everyone comes forward.
So what's the total number of kindergartners?
I'm going to have to look that up. It's not in this report. Let me go back.
So we have six that have not done their registration.
We have six classes. And in your update that was sent last week, I said, out of these six, out of the 18 spots. So I have a third column that always shows overages and spots left in a class. And for kindergarten, I have 18 spots with asterisks. Of the 18, six have incomplete packets. That means six have started the process, have brought things in. That is not unusual. Sometimes it takes time for them to get their medical records, et cetera. Then we know of six students from our pre-Ks that we know have not started the registration process yet. And we are following up with phone calls with them. That comes from MLK and Epcap. So there are 12 seats left after we have those six.
But that's 12 students that we haven't, that they haven't finished the process.
There are 12 seats left after the six have completed in this, yes.
All right. So I guess my concern is that just in the off-chance that those six and six don't do what they say they're going to do, then how many kids are we over? What I just, what I don't want to have happen is in September.
We're already over. So what I'm trying to say to you, we will have, kindergarten is already capped. And then we will have to go back to TAN and ask them if they'll take overages, knowing now, before August 15th, we have contractual language that when we know we are already over at each grade level, we bring back a teacher or open another class, at that grade level.
And I guess my concern is that I would rather, my preference would be, I'd like to get much closer to the opening of school before I pull the trigger on making a commitment to a teacher in a contract that once they're here, they're here. That's just my opinion.
I understand. But you also have to understand what it does to families and children. What you're doing with families, children, and their teachers is we're setting up, I'll say, mock class registrations, class lists. And that at the 11th hour, we're going to have to shift classes and teachers if we have to open another class. We've done, this has happened before unexpectedly. But it does cause a lot of chaos and upset.
Mrs. Colan?
Could you explain that, that chaos? I don't follow you.
That chaos, what happens is the teachers and the principal at this point in time, the principals will assign students. They look at all different backgrounds of the students. They look at their learning needs. They look at, we look at staffing, for instance, if we need certain teachers in classrooms to help support our children with IEPs. And then we set up the schedules. And in creating those rosters, staffing is assigned to classes, not just the classroom teacher. Support teachers are also assigned to those classes to support children with IEPs or special, or other needs. If we wait, then we wait two weeks before school opens. And then everything has to shift. If we have more than expected, or in Dr. Power's case, maybe we don't have to do anything. But I will, no matter what, I will have to go to the TAN leadership and ask for a waiver or ask if we can do overages.
I guess my concern, my question was, how does that affect the child and the teacher? This is inside baseball. So these decisions are made without the parent's involvement, correct?
Well, that's where I'm going to say, well, it depends on when. Parents and families also want to know who their teacher is.
Before school?
Yes, yes.
In kindergarten?
Yes, yes. They have to, they have three or four days of, we call it a soft opening, where the children and their parents go to Pell, come to Pell. They meet the teachers. The teachers meet the students. They kind of screen the students. They look at how they're getting along, et cetera. And then the teachers, the kindergarten teachers get together. And they set up the schedules and they set up where they believe the best fit is for the students.
Right. So the, okay, I'm confused. So by doing that, which I, sounds good, that they're getting the kids together and they're figuring out.
With parents, so parents understand.
It's still, it's still, it's still in flux. It's still a fluid situation. So they haven't been assigned to a teacher, a class, boom, boom. So I don't understand that chaos part.
The fluid situation is, if you don't have enough adults there ahead of time, knowing that we're going to have to open another classroom, it, I'm just sharing. It creates chaos.
Sounds like a management issue.
Mrs. Bowlen?
The chaos is also created because now we have to put those kids in a PE class. We have to put them in all those different things that they don't have space, you know.
Or the schedule's already been set by the school. And now we have to add an additional class for our specialists, for our art teacher, for our PE teacher. Another class has to be set so we don't go over in those classroom settings.
And I will say, this is the one place I'm the most comfortable adding a teacher ahead of time, is kindergarten.
So what is the date that you need to hire somebody? Like, what's the drop dead date where you know you need to hire someone? So the 15th?
I would, I'm looking over at my HR director. Ideally before August 15.
Today's the 12th.
I know. And that's why it's here today.
Okay.
I have other questions. We're off this topic.
What's this?
I have other questions. The business meeting, we're off, we're talking about.
It's off the topic?
No, no, no. Okay, if you have other questions. Because if you're done talking about what you're talking about now. So, Mr. Gonzalez, at a finance meeting, you spoke of taking line, I know my glass might be up with light on, the special ed outside placement line item. Pull up the light on it. It's lined up, 55630.
Correct.
And that has been cut a million dollars.
That's right, sir.
So the special ed director need to come up and help us out with that? We were just hoping it goes away.
That was a budget exercise to balance our budget in June.
So 1.5 million, we have 1 million in outside placements that were cutting from last year to this year. So last year was 2 million, the round number, and this year it's 1 million.
That was our budget exercise to balance the budget in June.
So, help me out, help this committee, because I'm a little confused. Why, if you think it's going to be 2 million, where are we going to get the million dollars from?
I mean, ideally, when we run out of cash, we will likely have to ask city council for assistance. We don't generate revenue here at the school department, sir.
And as of now, we're not supposed to be using the surplus?
It is not included in any of the forecasts I've shared.
So what about, one of the speakers earlier mentioned that there was a lot of layoffs at Rogers. It doesn't seem like there's been a lot of layoffs. I know it's passe now. But what about how many we've laid off? And I think it's only like seven teachers, am I correct? So only seven teachers have been laid off. Not a massive amount. And then second, what about paraeducators?
I'll speak.
Anybody can answer.
All right. So today, and we had a meeting, the we is Director Jakes, Director Andrade, and me. We had a meeting and we reviewed all the paraeducators. Director Andrade has gone through the paraeducators with a fine-tooth comb. She has looked at the roles we need to support the students based upon federal regulations, IEPs. And we are in the middle of those discussions. As a matter of fact, there was a follow-up this afternoon. We're still looking at those numbers. I know in the we is Director Gonzalez, Director Andrade, and me. Because we also know, and I shared, that at our finance meeting, there's a recommendation on the table to try to reduce 10 more positions in the paraeducator area. So that is a work in progress, and we're still trying to see if we can address that. Director Andrade has assured me, though, that the positions she has, which she shared the vacancies with Director Gonzalez and me today, are positions that we do need to fill. And Director Gonzalez, I want to be clear, his recommendation is to freeze and not hire. At this point in time, I do not believe we have a choice because we have to fulfill and comply with IEPs.
So could the Director Special Ed answer the question of how many kids we have outside placement last year and how many we have this year?
Yes. Director Andrade, would you come up, please?
I mean, if the number's the same, I don't know, that million dollars.
It, no, the numbers are not the same.
Lower?
No, we've had new registrations over the summer. And I'm going to share with the group, for those of those, for those not familiar, that it is not folklore that the registration of one child or two children can make or break a budget in some districts because of some high needs that the children have or because of out-of-district placements they were already in before they arrived at your school district. So that is a fluctuation that can work two ways. It can increase a district's budget if they move in and it can decrease a school district's budget if they move out. So that is something, intuitions, you have to be, it's very fluid.
Okay, what do we have?
This is Director Andrade.
So what exactly, what are you looking for?
25, 24, 25. How many outside placements do we have? It was, the budget was almost, it was almost 2 million dollars. You can look it up later if you have to, I'm not telling you.
Nope, I have it right here. We had 27 that we placed in out-of-district placements and three that were placed by DCYF.
Okay. And what's the projection for '25, '26?
22 placed by us, three placed by DCYF. With an estimated total of $2,366,572.46.
So are you people focused on this? Am I, is it just me? Now, you've taken a million dollars from a line item that's going to be very, very similar amount of money. And if you bring these kids back, it might be a nightmare for the thing. So we're a million dollars short and we're hoping that something happens at the end of the year, I guess. I mean, it's not a way to run a business, even though it's school. I understand that's a business, unfortunately.
Anyone else have any questions?
You know, I just want to respond to that. You know, we've balanced the budget on a lot of assumptions. And we took an assumption that we can rein in or redirect over the course of the year, some of the special ed tuitions. That's the calculation, calculated risk we've taken. If we can't deliver on that, then we will have a bigger financial problem. We've got a financial problem. And the financial problem, if you want to go back and try to second-guess that, you'll make a bigger financial problem. And at some point, there's either one or two things that's going to happen. The city's going to have to give us more money or we're going to end up in Corullo, where they'll go through all our budgets and all our books. And they'll find out whether we misspent our money. And if we didn't, then the city's going to have to pay the bill anyways. And from the beginning of the conversation, we've said to people, we don't have enough money. And, you know, kudos to the superintendent and the other people who've been aggressive. Kudos to Bob Leary who says, listen, let's make some hard cuts. But at the end of the day, when you're done, that this number could grow as opposed to getting smaller. That's what we're faced with, and whether we like it or not. And I hate being on a school committee where I come in and I don't have the money to do programs and do things for kids. I've got to sit here and take cuts. I've created programs over my lifetime with the mall at Thompson and, you know, things for kids and counseling and after-school programs, all these things. And I have to sit here and cut programs. That's the last thing I want to do. And the last thing I want to do is get on this school committee and have to fight for programs for kids at the high school, but I did. But yes, we've got a financial problem. People better understand that. And it could only get bigger at this point. I hope it doesn't. I hope it gets smaller.
Anyone else?
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
I mean, in the long term, and I've heard the superintendent say, I agree with her, what we're doing is not sustainable. It's not, and it's only going to get worse. We need to come up with some new ideas. So I believe typically with the expenditure revenue and restricted grant report, we would have a motion to accept it. I believe the motion was to approve it. Is that right, Mrs. Nash? Do we have a motion to approve this? Because if so, we should withdraw it and make a motion to accept it.
I can withdraw my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor withdrawing that motion?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So now we need a motion to accept.
I move that we accept the expenditures, revenue, and restricted grants report.
Second.
Ms. Winslow, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
I'm a nay.
3.5, Mrs. Bowlen?
3.5 is, this is a motion to accept the recalls as presented for approval to include a recall off the, at sixth grade position at Thompson.
Second?
Second.
Winslow? Discussion?
I didn't understand.
I didn't understand that. Say it again, Becky.
So this is to accept the recalls that have been presented to us to include a recall for a sixth grade teacher at Thompson.
Okay, I understand now.
We have a motion and a second, and you, I believe.
Yeah, I have, I have a, I won't be using any names because of union problems, but there's a position on this list that I completely disagree with, the placement of the person in the position that the superintendent has put in, put the person in. Trying not to say anything that will let it go. But we really have to think about, I understand their seniority, I get it. But we also have to think about the value that that person is going to give to the students. And if the person isn't equipped to give the value to the students, then what are we here for? Especially in a situation, I won't, I can't say what it is, but it's really an important position, and the person is not appropriate for that position. That's all I have to say.
Any more discussion? Mr. Leary?
Yes, I'll be voting no. I'm a little confused that we're bringing people back, that we have less than 500 kids, around 500 kids at Thompson for grades five, six, seven, and eight. So the numbers are small. If this was a business, you got to make more cuts. I mean, as you said, if you're a miss go, Mr. Chairman, it's going to get worse and worse as time goes on. You've got to make massive cuts. You can't run a business, and, you know, you have a restaurant, and all of a sudden you get 500 people coming in dinner every weekend, and all of a sudden, a couple of years later, you're down to 100. You don't keep the whole staff, you have to get rid of something to stay in business. And I know people like hear that you say it's a business, but you can't continue with this and keep on bringing more people in here.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Next up, 3.6.
What was the vote, Mr. Chairman?
5-2.
5-2?
4-3.
This is a motion to accept policy 1585, which is a maintenance of policy manual, and 4100, administrative lines of responsibility.
Second? Dr. Flowers, second?
Isn't there a third policy on that?
I think we're going to.
We're pulling now.
That's been old.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Was that? All right. Next, Mrs. Bowlen, 5160.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy change 5160 as read, student attendance. This is the first reading.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Winslow? Discussion.
I have a question, I'm not sure it pertains to student attendance. The commissioner just on TV tonight, and they had interviewed, I forgot, was Channel 10 or 12 or one of them. And she says if the students are not attending, you can start telling them not passing out. She was saying that tonight, so if, and that's 18 days. So if you have kids more than 18 days, and the teacher feels like that this person hasn't made it, we can start retaining people now, you know?
Ms. Winslow, this was vetted through policy. Would you like to explain the changes in it?
Sure, sure. So actually, Director Andrade formed an attendance working group earlier in the school year. One of the first, can, can you hear me? Yeah, okay, sorry. One of the first tasks was to tackle our many attendance policies, really to tighten them up and have consistent language, making sure that everything in our policy is something we're doing in our district. Because there was a lot of stuff that we had moved away from. And this, actually, policy 5160 is intended to replace the current 5160, 61, 62, 63, 64, and 65. So it's going to take six policies and combine them into one. One of the goals was to have consistent, easier-to-understand language. It used to say, I had it written down and lost it, but we, it was.
Authorized and unauthorized versus excused.
We changed it to unexcused and excused absences. And after consulting with other districts who made similar changes and the attendance working group, which includes our attendance coordinators, our family service coordinators, teachers, part of our policy subcommittee, we decided that the list of excused absence reasons would be tightened up as well. The biggest, I'd say reason for that is that most kids will have a couple of unexcused absences, right? You'll, you'll be sick, you just have to stay home, it's not a big deal. What happens is that students who are consistently and chronically absent rack up dozens of absences. And prior to this policy change, they would all be listed as excused. And that really works against us when we're trying to then intervene for this student in family court, wherever it might be. And Director Andrade can speak to this, so please get into the details. We know that requiring a doctor's note is a big leap. I don't have a primary care physician right now, a lot of our families don't. And you know what, if you're sick one day, it's okay. You're not going to go to the doctor, none of us do now. But the point of that change was really to, you know, again, if a student has just a few absences, it's not a big deal. It's when they start accumulating many more that we have to intervene. And maybe in that case, they really do need to see a doctor. That is when we're going to step in. There's, this is just the policy, the plan and the protocol for intervening when a student is chronically absent or does need extra supports is a whole separate project. So I don't know if I covered everything, but I know Director Andrade has plenty to say on it, and I would welcome questions.
I have to say, as, as the only parent of a student sitting up here tonight, I have issues with getting a doctor's note every time my kid is sick. I mean.
And you don't, you don't have to get a doctor's note every time your, your child is sick, but then it's unexcused, and that's okay. No one is going to, you're not, nobody's going to get in trouble for having two, three, four, five, six unexcused absences over the course of a year. There's no repercussions for that. It's just an accurate report of what's happening.
Yeah, okay.
Can I say something? Oh, go ahead.
Mrs. Bowlen, I mean, Mrs. Colan.
I had a parent call as well, and there's a gap in the language. And I'm on the subcommittee, and I was uncomfortable with it. I felt as though we were setting kids up for failure that didn't, weren't failing, that we should accept a parent's note. But I, there's just that gap, and I don't think we've bridged it appropriately.
I don't understand what you mean by gap.
The gap between the kids that are chronically, chronically, chronically absent and that kid that gets a cold, he shouldn't have to go to the doctor. And I know what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, that it's no big deal. But unexcused means they did some, just, just for the child, they didn't do anything wrong.
Nope.
They shouldn't have to go to the doctor to get a note. So there's a gap in the policy.
Anyone else, Mrs. Bowlen?
What about changing that word to unverified instead of unexcused? What? So it's just, it's not as harsh, like, it wasn't verified, nobody went to a doctor.
Well, there's other reasons for an excuse too. It can be bereavement, you have a court date, there's other reasons for.
Right, but you'd send in a note for those, like you would, if, and you said that, court dates are.
Yep.
But then it would be verified. I'm just saying, it's just a softer term, unverified, I don't know.
I just want to point out that this language actually came from our attendance team, the people who are on the ground, working with the families, working with the students, who are desperately trying to increase attendance. And we have to, we have to really push, we really have to push. The student who misses just a few days and is keeping up academically, there's, this doesn't go on their record, it's not going to affect admission to school or college or military or anything. It's when we have a problem and we need to intervene, we have to have.
Accurate data. We actually have. We have to have accurate data, is what it is, is that we have to know that when we have to intervene, if we have to have a truancy court session for that family, that it doesn't say that they have 72 excused absences. That is not accurate.
I understand that. There has to be a different way to bridge that gap, though, between the chronically absent and the kid that has a cold.
Mr. Higgins, I know you, you want to say something. If you want to say something, though, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address.
So Sean Higgins, 95 Third Street. I understand the reasoning for the policy, and I sent an email to the committee. But every time somebody says this doesn't affect the students, at Rogers High School, if you are unexcused, you get a zero for the coursework, a zero for a quiz, and any assignments that you do that day. So it does affect the students. And the other thing is, is this is about counting, and I understand that. But the two highest areas in Newport, at least at Rogers and Thompson, are medical excuses and unexcused. So now what you're going to have is, the medical excuse is going to go way down, and the unexcused is going to go way up. And as a parent, if I decide my child is not fit to go to school, that's an excused absence, not an unexcused absence, because somebody wants to count. That's all I get to say.
Just so you know, the policy around the grading is eliminated because it got changed into this policy where they are. No, it's eliminated, so that's policy 51.
5164.
64, so that's one of the ones that's being eliminated with the acceptance of this policy. And that, and that would have to change based on the new policy.
So what you're saying, Ms. Winslow, is you took the six, and that was one of them?
Yes.
Eliminated?
Yes.
Of this policy?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I feel a little better about that.
Yes, and it addresses makeup work that the student has to coordinate with their teacher, or if it's like the case of the elementary school, the parent has to do it.
All right, I feel, I feel.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're.
I will say, I mean, I know how important attendance is. I've gone to the truancy court, I've seen it. I know it's an epidemic at the high school, so.
Yeah.
I am willing to try this.
Yeah, and I think if anybody at any point in time, you know, if this policy is accepted, if anybody is experiencing something that is negative, that's happening because of this policy, email me, call me. I'm here, and I'm willing to listen and come back and say, ooh, that piece, you're right, that doesn't work. Let, let's try that again. I just.
Yeah, what I would like to do is just put this back on the agenda, so maybe in a December meeting or January, maybe halfway through the school year, see how it's going.
Okay.
Yeah, before you leave, so.
Well, it has to have a second reading, right? Sorry.
May I just clarify? I just want to, I didn't understand what you meant. You meant we'll take, proceed to vote tonight and at our next meeting, but then set it up for review? And just see how it's going?
Like in December, January, halfway through the school year? Have a review, and you have to come in and.
I think that's great, yeah.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, and the more you look at these, the more things pop up. And the business of having a doctor's note, or some kind of medical person's note, if the student is ill, legitimately ill, especially some communicable illness, or something that the teachers should be aware of if the child has some kind of a long-term issue, that, you know, we, I would think you'd have to have some, something to assure the classroom teacher, the principal, that this is, this is an important point. You might have someone out for an entire school week, and unless mom or dad or someone has even called and said, hey, we have some, we got a good deal on tickets to, you know, skiing or something, going down to Disney World. People have done that, they've taken the kids out when it's not the vacation week. You're not going to get a doctor's note for that. But at least something written, or even the phone call, just say. So I mean, that when students are out for prolonged periods of time, or repeatedly, and those days of absenteeism is built up, that is what the whole concern is about. And again, if some, some are not showing up, does the family know about it? There's a lot of details in here that, that build up these policies. You don't hear the doctor's note if you've gone off traveling somewhere or taken a long weekend, but that happens. And those days off cut right into the, the learning process. You know, you get all these bits of information. Research tells us, if you're not in school, you're not learning. Well, that took a lot of thinking, we know that, but we have to keep reminding people. So the excuse, an excuse sometimes is just, to me, even a phone call. Or even having it written, a note comes in. We're not going to be in for a couple of days.
Thank you, Dr. Bowlen.
I don't think there's a problem with that.
Anyone else?
I mean, excuse doesn't mean you're making up something, it's just, this is the reason why.
Dr. Bowlen?
All right, so just, so we realize that people are not going to go get doctor's notes. They're not going to be, a lot of these people are not going to be able to get doctor's notes.
Yeah.
All right.
It's not happening today either.
You can't get in to see a doctor.
Exactly. And it's not a problem if you're only ill a few times, and every parent judges that and keeps their kid home or sends their kid into school. It's when it's chronic, and if it's chronic, that child needs to see a doctor. And we have family service coordinators who are going to make sure that that happens. That's the intent.
We have a motion, and we have a second. So I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is 3.9, Mrs. Bowlen.
This is a motion to accept the agreement between the Newport Public Schools and Coastline EAP.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Winslow? Any discussion? Mrs. Bowlen, I mean, Mrs. Colan, I'm sorry. I'm so used to saying Mrs. Bowlen.
I guess it's a compliment that Gayle keeps calling me Mrs. Bowlen.
Yeah. I understand that we're not paying for this, consultants, there's no cost?
No, there is a cost to it.
Oh, wait, wait, are we, are we on, which one are we on?
3.9.
3.9. It says that they wrote a grant and that it's being covered. Am I in the right one?
3.9.
Yeah, it says no cost to district, right in it.
Is that correct?
We get 50% reimbursed of the cost, but there is a cost to the district.
That's not in the backup, that's not what we have as our backup. It says that they wrote a, they wrote a grant. And my comment was going to be, if there's no skin in the game, how do we hold them accountable, and how well do they know our population, and how are their services measured? I have a lot of questions about this one.
Pull it.
Yeah.
Make a motion to pull it.
Pull it, yeah. I, I don't, I think we need to have a separate conversation.
I make the motion to pull it.
We have a second.
Second.
Yes.
Any?
Wait a minute.
Wait, wait a second.
Can, can we pause for a moment? I think there's some confusion.
Well, that's why we want to pull it.
I mean, I, I can talk to it.
Is it, yeah, is this time-sensitive?
We can wait until September.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
310.
The motion is.
I need, I need to clarify with Director Jakes just came up here for, was for the EAP. The one that was in front of you just now was for the Rhode Island Student Assistant Counselor.
Same thing.
Yes.
Right. And that has been fully funded. It is not a cost to the school district. That has been supported by the, it's been supported by RIAS.
RIAS.
Right, RIAS. But they're doing business as that, it's a, it's a corporation doing business as RIAS.
RIAS. So it's just too many questions. Can we put it on the September ballot? That is, that is fine. We can do that, and I'll have the person come and explain the process.
Will they interview services of the kids?
Yes.
Will they interview?
No, they'll be, they don't start up until usually mid-September.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Three-ten. The motion is, this is a request that the superintendent advertise for the position of business manager, and that an inquiry be made to the Middletown School Department as to their willingness to share this position.
Second?
Second.
I believe this was Mr. Leary.
Yeah, Mr. Flowers, you have any, you had a comment about this earlier. You want to bring it up?
Well, I mean, I, I saw the request, and I said, I think what we're asking is, and I may have already started the process, that we would advertise for that position. And we also would inquire of Middletown whether there's a willingness to share that position. I think we talked about doing that a couple of meetings ago, and I'm just, I think Mr. Leary wanted to formalize that.
Mr. Dring.
Mrs. Cullen.
Dr. Germaine, have you had any conversations with our city manager regarding sharing services with the city finance office?
Yes, I have, and he has spoken to the city finance director. The city finance director thinks they may be able to do it. They'd have to look into it further. I've also had conversations with the superintendent in Middletown. They have been using a consultant, and they just recently hired someone for their school district.
I was told by the chair of the Middletown School Committee that the town of Middletown does their school finances.
Unless there's new news in the last two weeks.
No, the town of Middletown actually is copying what the Newport School Department does with the city of Newport. We actually gave them the model on how we do it. So they still hire a finance director, as we do, for the superintendent, and to oversee the school, I'll say, the school business. And the, I will confirm with the Middletown superintendent if they are doing something differently, but that was what they were setting up, because they actually looked at the model that we have.
This was two weeks ago, that...
Correct.
About that information.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And, and a lot of this can be handled in our, down the, down our agenda when we start talking about consolidating services as well.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So Ms. Jimmy, just conclude that. So could you contact the city, let them know that's going out for RFP?
Yes.
Yep, okay. And maybe in the meantime, contact Middletown, too, and then put out RFP or what's...
I will send a formal communication, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, what, so what exactly was the motion that we made?
The motion is...
RFP for business management.
Request that the superintendent advertise a position of business manager, and that an inquiry be made to the Middletown School Department as to their willingness to share the position.
In Newport, yeah.
And I'd like to, oh, well, can I just add that we also include the city of Newport?
Right.
Um, that, so you're making amendment, right?
Amendment to the amendment, yeah.
A second for Mrs. Bowlin, Mrs. Cullen's amendment?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? And now we have a vote on the original amend, the original motion. So we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Mr. Chair, can I just, I want to make a comment on this, though. I just want to make it very clear to you that if we go into a, with the city, most likely what will happen is the city's going to have to hire a position. That person will get trained in how to do the operations of a business manager. And as soon as that person is pretty confident in that job, my guess is they're going to go to the open market, because that job on the open market is about $165,000 plus benefits. So we could get ourselves in a situation that we will become a training ground for people to come into the city. The city hires the person, we train the person, and then they leave and go someplace else. I'm just forewarning you, because that's a very difficult position. There's six positions open in the state right now. I, I caution you about that particular process. Not that I don't think that they can't do it, not that I don't think they can handle it, but I'm going to tell you, as soon as the person gets that skill level, they're going to go someplace else because they're going to be very marketable, and we will become a training ground for school business managers. That's my...
Well, is RFP, is RFP going to go to anybody in the public?
All right, we had a motion and a second, and we moved on. So three-point-eleven, Mrs. Bowlin.
Yes, I'm going to make a, a statement first, so you understand, and then I'll make the motion. This request is to modify policy fifteen-ten to allow the school committee to elect the chair and vice chair to one-year terms if they so choose. Now, the language we're going to use is, and this is the motion, the terms can be for one year if the committee chooses to do so. The, this determination will be made prior to the election of these positions.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Flowers, second. Any discussion? Mr. Leary, did you want?
No, that's perfect. That's, that's being referred to the policy subcommittee, which is good.
Anyone else? Ms. Winslow?
I just, the vote to accept the language. Why, I mean, if that's what you want to do, and we vote on it, we don't have to send it back to the policy subcommittee.
Yeah, it's just done. You vote. So we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
I didn't vote, so I'm, I'm abstaining. I'm a little confused. I know what's coming out with it. I just don't, I understand what got changed, no.
So who voted what?
We had...
I abstained.
Mrs. Nash, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Mrs. Cullen?
Aye.
Mrs. Cullen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
I'm staying on this one.
Dr. Power?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye. I changed my mind.
Um, three-twelve, Mrs. Bowlin.
Okay. This is a request that the district issue an RFP to solicit bids from legal firms to create a document for negotiations that the next school committee can utilize.
Second?
So I'd like to add into it...
Hold on, Mr. Leary, you need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Cullen, seconds.
So I'd like to amend that motion a little bit. If I get a second?
You have to tell us where it is.
What's the motion?
Yeah, the motion would be to include all contracts, both individual and certified and non-certified contracts, and anything else the committee would like to assign to them.
Do we have a second for Mr. Leary's amendment?
Can you read that whole motion again, please? It sounds like you're striking the original motion and replacing it with something new.
Read the motion back.
The original motion. This is a request that the district issue an RFP to solicit bids from legal firms to create a document for negotiations that the next school committee can utilize.
We have a motion and a second. So Bob, you wanted to amend that?
I did. I made the amendment to include, in that amendment, to include all contracts, both certified, non-certified, and individual, and anything else the committee wants assigned to them with contracts.
All right, so do we have, do we get a second?
Never got a second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Dr. Flowers.
A question. I think it's been answered already, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask it again. Is there a line item in our budget for that? If, say, we get, you hire a negotiating lawyer, is there a line item already in place?
No.
If there's not a line item already in place, my question is, we've been talking about the budget for quite some time now, and we talk about making cuts. My question would be, who and or what is going to be pulled out of the budget to pay for a negotiating attorney? That's my question.
Question?
I mean, I...
Go ahead.
I, I mean, Mr. Leary...
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, I can answer that. First of all, the contract, I'm not sure when's ten, twenty-seven or what, contracts? So you wouldn't even be starting this in probably until September of twenty-sixth. So it'd be another year away before you start this. We already have a lawyer on target for this, but just trying to look for somebody to work on contracts for us, because we've been, as numerous people have said here before, and I've heard from committee, that very few ministers were laid off, but they all had contracts through 2026. So we couldn't do much with that. So now, we're going to have individual contracts, if you so choose, as a committee, you know, and then we can work very hard on seeing what we need to do and not do. That's my point. I just want to add into the statement that it could be certified, non-certified, or individual, whatever you want.
Just for clarification, they are all individual contracts.
Correct, but they were lumped together when they voted on. Now we could, now if you, now you could, which you get a lawyer in here, you ask him, could we pull this one and make a single vote, pull that one, make a single vote, like that, if you need to do that?
The answer is yes.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Winslow?
I'm not really sure how to ask my question. I'm sorry. The, I mean, we have a lawyer on retainer, but we can change our mind at any time. We can just say we want to interview lawyers this year at the end of the year, and we can talk to all of them about their strategies or their recommendations. I, I don't know that we have to issue an RFP and pay for something. Well, yeah, we could just decide we want to change law firms, and then they do it for us.
Fair enough. Can you do that? Yes, Mrs. Bowlin?
I would support the original, your original motion, because I understand how important that is to you, that to create a document before many people on here, you know, so that the next time we do negotiations. But I'm having trouble with the second one. It's too open-ended, and, and the money cost is just, you know, we don't have it.
So vote the amendment down, go back to the other one as well.
Yeah.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second on the amendment, so I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor of Mr. Leary's amendment? Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
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 But I do like what Ms. Winslow said.
So now we have the, now we have the original, the original motion to vote on. Any more discussion on that? All right, so all those in...
Could you read it again one more time? Thank you.
Sure. Okay, the motion is, a request that the district issue an RFP to solicit bids from legal firms to create a document for negotiations that the next school committee can utilize.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Next up is three-thirteen, Mrs. Bowlin.
Yep, I gotta just turn this over. The motion is to support the Newport City Council's resolution on school regionalization.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Cullen? Well, this is, this has been an evolving process, as I think, as we all know. And if, if anyone who's sitting here tonight, through this meeting, you can tell what it's all about. We are on an unsustainable financial course. And every year, it's going to get worse. We need to do something. If, if, if we can regionalize with Middletown, just on the busing alone, the two communities will save $3 million. That's a million and a half each. This, this makes sense. I don't know why it didn't, it didn't pass a few years ago, but we'll, we'll put that behind us and, and we'll move on. But like I said, we are on an unsustainable course. And this is just the beginning. This is, this is, this resolution is really just saying, th, this is what we can do. We're going to, we're going to work with Middletown to try to come up with something we can put on the ballot. And, and the most, the easiest thing would be to merge the administration. It would be the first step towards a full regionalization between, between Newport and Middletown. I mean, we would go from 50% reimbursement on the high school to eighty, over 80%. We could put some of that money, and we, it's probably going to be, this motion is going to be amended, to add some of it into an educational fund. So that, because that money will go back to the city. The city would kind of have to redirect some of that money back to us. And again, anyone sitting in this, this meeting tonight, you can see what's going on with the finances. We have to do something, because again, it is not a sustainable course that we are on. So I'm going to open it up to anyone else on this, on this committee. I know Mrs. Cullen probably has a lot to say, so I'll go to you first, and then we'll go to Ms. Winslow.
Actually, I don't have a lot to say, because I think that if we don't vote in favor of this, then we just might as well turn the lights on, because we're, we need the money. We have a declining population. I did a little research to see some of the communities that are much larger than ours, that have one superintendent, that are urban, urban cities. Pawtucket has 7,800 enrolled, Wensocket 5,500. So we have, and this is, this is an old number, because I think it's 1736 as of June of 2025 enrolled. And Middletown, maybe this is an old number, but they have about 1,850. So together, we're talking about, you know, 3,500 kids. So we're still one of the smallest districts in the state. One superintendent, I think, is sufficient for the size of our districts. So I'm 100% in favor of combining administrations as a first step. I think that, I know a lot of people want total regionalization, but that, unless we have a genie and a magic wand, that's not going to happen overnight. But this can happen quickly. If we move, if the city tomorrow night votes, and we move forward with this, and we get Middletown on board. A lot of trust was lost with Middletown because of the March resolution that was very open-ended and not well-vetted. So we're rebuilding the bridge, and I'm thrilled that we have this opportunity. We need to get this on the ballot by April. I think it's doable, and I hope everybody supports it.
And just, just to follow up on what Mrs. Cullen said, we had a demographic study that says we're going to lose 500 kids in the next 10 years. You asked our, our finance director, okay, well, our, our state funding, federal funding, it depends on our population student enrollment. So if we lose 500 students, what is that going to equate to? He says $5 million a year that we would lose. How in the world are we going to keep the lights on? I have no idea. You know, and, and we also, we're state-mandated for MLL and special ed. I mean, that's all we're going to have the money to spend. I don't, I don't know how we're going to have AP classes or honors classes. I mean, I, I know we heard tonight of Colleen Gupp talked about cutting classes. Can you imagine how many classes we're going to have to cut if we lose $5 million a year in state and federal, federal funding? So I, so I think this is, this is really important, and I think we're at a point now where we really have to do this. And if we don't do it, I think, years down the road, I think the state is going to come in and say, "You guys have to do it." And then, so if, if that happens, they tell us how to do it. So if we could, we can do it on our own, we can make our own decisions on how we want to do it. So instead of having someone come in from the state, say, "You guys have to do it, and this is how you have to do it", and on top of that, we lose 80% reimbursement. So time is of the essence, and I think we need to do this now. So I'll open it up to anybody else.
Um, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, Ms. Winslow.
No, it's okay. I'd actually like to make a motion to amend the resolution, to strike the first resolved and replace with that the Academic Integration Advisory Committee proposed in March 2025 be convened by September 30th, 2025.
Second? I do not see a second.
A second.
Mr. Leary? I will go ahead.
I can explain.
Yep.
Yeah, back in March, I asked, after that resolution was passed with council, I asked if we could consider putting it on our agenda as a sign of support, and send it off to the Middletown School Committee. I was told no. We don't have any authority to require Middletown to participate, that it wasn't substantive or a real attempt to move forward. It's poorly written, just a bunch of fluff. I respectfully disagree. And I think it's ironic that this resolution is now on our agenda, just a few days ago, as of a few days ago, and says there's a new option from RIDE, but there's no backup that's been presented to the Newport School Committee on that new option. And it asks Middletown to work with us again, so I guess we do. And it asks Middletown to work with us again, so I guess we do have that authority. It makes a small attempt to, again, put the focus on the students and academics, and I find it intensely frustrating that there is all this money out there for school construction reimbursement, but there's no money for school lunches for children, or increased state aid, or mental health support, or recruiting and supporting and training teachers who can meet the needs of our students. I could go on. But what really has me confused is that there's a date of a vote given, but we still haven't thought about how we make this work, and we really need to. Because by all accounts, we're going to have completely separate schools in two different towns, which is highly unusual. Without consolidating buildings and reducing staff and changing the systems and the mindsets, we won't see meaningful savings or change. I mean, a million dollars is going to get eaten up in our budget next year just with pay raises. So we have to go further, soon. The word "regionalization" is not a panacea. We can't just slap it onto our district name and then walk away. So we're going to get out of this deal what we put into it. A really true concerted effort to be creative and figure out something that has not been done before this way. And obviously, we can't predict the future, but we also just can't figure it out as we go. You know, if we're forced to devote endless hours to fixing headaches as they come up, it's going to be at the expense of the discussions about improving teaching and learning in Newport. And I believe that our most valuable, vulnerable students, our most valuable asset, they'll fall through the cracks. The families who have, don't have the loud voices or the advocates here, they will not be addressed. So I think as a school committee member, that should be a red flag to us, and we really need to make sure that they're put first. If we were a private company and we wanted to undertake a project this big, there would be a project manager, we would have our internal experts, and we would hire a consultant to help us figure that out. The council put aside money to help us do that. And so I want to see that academic integration committee that was proposed back in March put forward. That's all.
So what you're wording, again?
To strike the first resolved.
Yes.
Replace with simply that the Academic Integration Advisory Committee proposed in March 2025 be convened by September thirtieth, 2025.
What about with the, that both Middletown and Newport provide an equal number of appointments to, and then the rest of your liking?
We could do that, too. I just don't know, I don't want to be too restrictive, and that resolution put a lot, a lot of detail in it. So I just want to say, refer back to it. But we can do that, too. Make the motion that both Middletown and Newport provide an equal number of appointments to the Academic Integration Advisory Committee by September thirtieth. To discuss potential educational improvements. I will, I will withdraw my original motion and amend.
Does she have a second for Ms. Winslow?
Second.
Mrs. Bowlen?
I'm really concerned, like, that there's going to take four councils that are going to probably look at this and pass it. The more times each, each group puts, you know, puts, what do you call it? Like amendments and, and things into it, you're messing it up. Like, I think we can, you know, address that later. I really feel like we need to leave this exactly the way it was written, and then it goes to the city council, and the city council, you know, then passes it and moves it on to Middletown. It's just going to take one of those four groups to kill it again, so.
Yeah, I just feel like this is a resolution in support of the resolution that the city council's doing tomorrow. We're not, we're not making law here.
Yeah.
I agree.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Cullen, I don't know why I get doing-
It's okay, it's okay. I agree with, with Mrs. Bowlen. I think that the more we, we add to this, the more it gets mucked up. It would be close to impossible, I think, to get, because there was no advertising to Middletown for the Academic Integration Committee. So it's, it's, I think it's eighteen to two or something like that right now. We need to, we need to figure out where we're going, but the first step is to pass this tonight, keep our fingers crossed, and call our city councillors to pass it tomorrow night, and then we get busy.
So we have, all those in favor of her amendment, please say aye. All those opposed?
Four-three.
No, 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 no. The amendment passed four to-
No, 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 no.
Three to four.
Bobby?
Bobby Leary voted for it.
Or Mrs. Nash, can you call a roll call vote on that?
Mr. Dring?
Uh, nay.
Mrs. Cullen?
Ms. Bowlen? Who are you calling?
Mrs. Cullen.
This is the amendment. I voted nay.
Nay.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Nay.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Dr. Power?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Passes four-three.
All right, I'm going to-
We're not done with this. This is just modified. And then we vote for the whole thing, right?
All right. Any more, any more discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the, the last resolve and add that the, that at least fifty-one percent of the added revenue will go to the endowment fund.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Once again, mucking it up, as you put it, and I'm telling you right now, that this is, you know.
These are suggestions to this, this is not, we are just making suggestions. I think we talked about this in our pre-meeting. We cannot change the city council's resolution, because that's not our purview. But we can make recommendations, and I think we have to keep, to keep those two thoughts separate. What we vote on in these amendments are only recommendations to the city council's resolution, so it's fine. I think if we want to talk about fifty-one percent, that's great. If you want to talk about how the Academic Integration Committee is set up, that's fine. But these are recommendations.
Mr. Chair, I believe Mrs. Cullen is correct that for tonight, I believe, the resolution in front of all of you is to either support or not support the city council's resolution. I am, I think what's happening is that is been taken off the table, and now you're making adjustments or amendments to the city council's resolution. I'm not, I was under the impression you were voting either up or down to support that, and then, to Mrs. Cullen's comments she just made, then if you had suggestions, you were then going to make them after you had your vote on the resolution. I'm just clarifying what I thought was tonight's purpose of this resolution.
Someone makes an amend, amendment, then gets a second, we have to take a vote.
But those, but it doesn't stick. But those could be recommendations to the city council-
That's, that's what I'm, I'm just wondering, because I am looking at the committee members, and I'm seeing some committee members are not clear possibly about what's actually being addressed. Just my observations.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not-
Excuse me, pardon. Dr. Flowers?
I think we even mentioned this earlier. I don't know, this is not our resolution. We're saying, are we going to support? Okay, so I might have been confused, I was, I'll be honest, I was confused with this vote. How can we amend something that we have not put together? I don't even think, really, it's appropriate, unless it a totally separate, someone gets up tomorrow night and says, we respectfully suggest-
Simply change your vote?
Just a moment, let me, yeah. But, because I, I, I have various questions about it. I mean, I was going to say, I'll support this primarily because of the financial advantage. The rest of it will obviously have to be addressed, and obviously, all sides have to get together with civil discourse. That's an important point, too. But I don't know how we can amend, we can amend something of our own, and even that takes a while. Yeah. So if we're looking at supporting this whole idea of their, of the council's resolution, that's something else.
All right, so, did you, go ahead.
Just wondering, can we make a motion to accept it exactly as written, and then go put those suggestions in? That works? Is, just to accept it? So if I make a further motion to, to accept it exactly as written, and then we would take the, I would have no problem with the recommendations that were made, the two recommendations that we make them to the city council?
All right, so we, well, we have a motion on the floor to approve it as, as it is. So you're saying, leave that as it is?
As is, to approve it as is, and then-
But we've already ordered to amend it.
But we'll take the two amendments, no, we take the two amendments and, and include, and, and suggest them, but they wouldn't be in the contingent upon, you know, the fact that we accepted their resolution.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yes. Let me see if I can do this now.
Do I need to withdraw?
So, so my motion is, is to accept as written by the city council, the resolution, and then the two amendments that were made, to put them in as recommendations to the city council. Second.
Second.
That's the same one?
Yep, same.
Same one.
All right. So we have a, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I'm confused, what's the two amendments? Bob Powers' amendment?
One is, one is Bob Power.
Oh, my God. So let me, I'm voting no in this whole thing all the way down the road here. Let's get to state. I don't trust that money is going to be used for the right purpose. Now Bob Powers is saying, let's give fifty-one percent of the money you're going to save to the endowment fund. I'm no in all of it, no, all down the road, no, no, no.
Why can't we vote on supporting the resolution?
I'll have to do that.
Then, then the, another-
That's what we're doing. Let's do it.
So we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, that would be, that would be-
I'm going to call for a vote, a roll call vote. Mrs. Nash, you ready?
To accept the resolution as written.
Up and down vote.
This is, this is not-
This is as written.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Mrs. Cullen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Nay.
Dr. Power?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Nay.
The pass is five-two.
Can I ask a question? What is, uh, Ms. Mooney, what, what, what is her agenda item? We can put that up next.
She, she is on-
Five-two?
Silitz, she's a Silitz contract. It was asked to be pulled earlier this evening, five-point-two.
So do you want to make a motion?
My motion is to, is to approve this sed, I can never say this word, sedlitz education agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Five-point-two.
Five-point-two. Oh, who else? We have a motion and a second.
I have some discussion.
Hold on, hold on. We want to make a motion, that's five-point-five-four.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so my first motion is to accept the superintendent's staff reports, five-one and five-four.
Second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five-point-two.
I thought you were five-two.
My motion on five-point-two is to provide approval for the sedlitz education-
They're by your side.
Silitz education agreement.
Ms. Mooney?
I think there was a question, yeah.
Yes, there was a question earlier, I just wanted to make sure I-
Nope, I'll just turn it over to you.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm here to present the contract proposal for Silitz for returning for consulting for our staff.
I have some questions.
Mrs. Bowlen?
It's eighty-five thousand dollars, and we have a shrinking school population, and we have a full-time MLL director. You, why can't you do this?
Yes, so this is also part of my duties and responsibilities, along with other things as well. Part of my MLL categorical grant from the state is to provide professional development to our staff. So on top of what I'm doing is building capacity with two other consultants from this consulting firm to help build capacity, momentum of, you know-
I understand, they're out of California. Have you looked at local Rhode Island consultancies? We have a very large Hispanic population. Have you talked to Connection Latina? I just don't, I can't approve eighty-five thousand dollars. It's forty-two thousand dollars a visit, at forty-two hundred dollars a visit, that's a lot, considering where we are with our budget. I just can't.
Yep, I know the two, the people that are visiting us are from Texas, and although Connection Latina is a wonderful group, they don't have certified L staff.
No, 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 I'm not asking for the, for them to be the consultants. I'm asking them if they have, you know, if you've talked to them about, there must be some people in Rhode Island, I know there are, there are people at Roger Williams, there's the, there's the Hispanic Institute, I can't think of the woman's name right now. There are a lot of opportunities here in Rhode Island that we should be tapping into, and probably they wouldn't cost eighty-five thousand dollars.
Question, are these approved by RIDE?
Oh, school districts can reach out to any consulting firm that they'd like to.
Is there a list that's given?
They don't have a list for that, no. No, in researching them, we've used them for, this will be our third year with them. These, it's the most compatible for our population, and Dr. Laura Scante's been here.
So you've had, you've had-
She's been here multiple times and has built a really great rapport with a lot of the staff she's been working on. And since we were not able to add a science ELL teacher at the high school this coming year, we had a specialist come in to support that staff, since no one is certified.
All right, any more discussion?
A question. It's, it's come out of the general fund?
Uh, now that the MLL categorical is now part of local.
Local funds. I want to vote no on eighty-five thousand dollars. We could use that to bring back the guidance council in elementary school.
I can only use it to support L students.
I know, it's come out of general funds.
But I have to allocate this for L to RIDE.
Right, but if you say no, that's eighty-five thousand dollars still going to be in the budget.
For L students.
So it'll come out of L budget?
Yes, this is only for Ls. I have, I have to-
All right, we have a, a motion, we have a second. I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Next up, five-three.
This is a motion to approve the Spring Point Agreement.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Winslow? Any discussion?
I, I do. I read, me, am I up? Okay. I read the principal's memo, and again, I, I don't see how the, how the outcomes of this is measured. I, I just, I would like to have seen a lot, I know it's paid for through the Bar Foundation, so it's other people's money, that we are very good at spending, but I don't see measurements here or outcomes, and I, I would like to put this off. I would like to say, let's, let's revisit this at another meeting.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Uh, we got to back up a little bit, we jumped over four to kind of help with Smooney, because she had to leave.
So, five-point-four, this is to, no, we did those, that's already been done, so we're at six-point-one, because we did the two-
No, we have to go back to award for director.
Got it, oh, got it, okay. Four-point-one, this is for approval of the award of bid to security one-oh-one. This is from the MPA four-one-nine, security system upgrade at NACTEC and door entry and TMS and NACTEC.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Power? Any discussion? All vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
4.2, Mrs. Bowlen.
This is for the approval of an award of bid to custom computer specialist, MPA 345, NACTEC camera system upgrade.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Power? Any discussion? Okay, going to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Six, old business.
The motion is to raise the Rogers High School graduation requirements from 20 to 24 credits.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Cullen? Uh, Mrs. Cullen, I believe this is, this is yours.
Um, I'll, I'll be brief. 20 credits is the lowest threshold in the state. That tells our kids that, sure, take lots of free time. And instead, if we say 24 credits, we're going to be saying, explore other things that you may not have thought about before. It's an opportunity in a sort of a carrot and a stick to take more, to expand their horizons, to try other things. I cannot imagine having all of this free time without some sort of structure. We need to figure out, I, kids just leave the building. They go out for coffee. They're bored. I mean, have we looked at the SurveyWorks data? We have to do better as a district to engage our kids in learning at all levels. And this is just one step towards that. We have to do better. Thank you.
I want to state that we, if, it's not going to cost more because it's not as if we're saying, you have to take an extra math class. Okay, so this is all across the board. The kids need to find those. And what we heard from, from all your reports is the kids are already doing it, right? So I, I wonder if it's a big leap going to 24. And should we, I, I'm just throwing this out, but I want to see it passed tonight. So is 22 a more of an acceptable number?
I'm fine with starting at 22.
Does 22 in fact, impact us financially?
I, I know that, I've talked to some of the NACTEC, well, the NACTEC director. And there's some openings that kids can take culinary classes. And we certainly have a big enough kitchen to fit more kids in, in the new high school. Also, our computer science IT courses are not filled. And these are, I mean, AI is here, people. We got to get these kids involved. And I think that we should be pushing them to try new things. We had that long discussion about the AP classes. I don't agree with a lot of that, that it helps kids in college if they're taking something that they're not prepared for. Let's get these kids prepared and engaged in their learning. So let's up, let's raise the bar. And believe, and we believe in them.
Dr. Cullen, with 22, would that affect us financially?
Not at this time, no.
So we have a motion and a second?
We, it's for 24, so we need to make an amendment.
Do you want to make an amendment?
I'm going to make an amendment to move it to 22. Second?
Any discussion on that?
I'm going to ask the vice principal and people, it says in the letter dissent that, I know it's based on 24, not 22, increasing credit requirements will have staffing and budgetary implications.
That is correct for 24.
The principal, the letter we received, it says it will have.
I, I need to see some proof of that.
Oh, we, we have an amendment to drop it down to 22.
So, let me ask the principal, vice principal, superintendent. You're 100% positive not one staff's going to be added?
I'm n, I'm not going to say I'm always 100%, but I will say this. I said if that is the parameters you want us to follow, then at this point in time, eventually we may need additional staff, but not at this time.
Right. 22. 22, yes.
People fighting hard to get this, to get this elementary school guidance council back. People somebody supported. And now we're going to add credits. And if we're going to add money to the budget, this is not good. And you're sitting here.
There's no money.
Arguing with the business manager over, over a million dollars.
Bobby, there's no money. There's no additional funding.
There's no additional funding.
Dr. Flowers?
No.
Maybe Mrs. Bowlen can remember, but remember several years back, there were 24 credits? And it was a motion and it passed to drop it to the 20? Because apparently a significant number of students picked up over the course of the four years, these extra, four extra credits. Maybe like .5 on one thing, .5 on another. And the concern was that some of the students were settling with, shall we say easier, or not as challenging courses. Maybe they would take, you know, maybe a, a lower level math or a lower level English or whatever. And in order to get them, excuse me, more inspired to take more challenging courses, working with that lower number was, was more doable. So it was a lot of discussion about it. People saying we're watering down by lowering the numbers. It wasn't at all that those credits are, you know, good, solid credits. I don't have the answer on that. Maybe extending it, but again, for, for the student, it would average out one extra a year or half a, I don't know, five tenths of a credit each semester. The scheduling is, that's the bear right there. That's the thing. These are the people who have to do all of that work on it. But just want to remind them that not that long ago, there were the 24 credits. And all of a sudden.
We lowered the bar.
I understand. We want, we want the kids to stretch themselves. We want them to, no matter what their, uh, their ability level or what challenges they have. And that's the thing, too. If you're putting this on every single student, it's going to be a lot of challenges in the scheduling. It's just a thought. It's not a bad idea by any means.
Just for clarification, the state changed the requirements at that point in time. And at that point in time, the guidance at that point in time did come forward and request that. That's how that happened.
Did you want to say something? Yeah.
So, Dr. Flowers, I was remembering last time I was, maybe two times ago, because this, this topic's been moved down a little bit. Um, in 2017 is when you lowered it to 20. And the thinking had been that, you know, kids would take more things, more, less pressure. Well, that isn't what's happened. And 20 was the minimum that RIDE has. And right now, Middletown is at 24, and they have a seven-period day. We have an eight-period day. And we're asking for 20. Portsmouth is 23. So we are the basement level. And I find that highly insulting for Rogers High School students. Everything you ever read is about having high expectations for students, your children. And at Rogers, we do not. And we teachers have been talking about this, and we're still hoping that you pass it tonight. Because we believe that having high standards is important. And we're tired of having the lowest standard of the high schools on the island. And it's really insulting to, to the students that people think so little of them, that they can't get 24 credits. And I, and your statistics show that many kids do take the extra classes that they can, fit in, that they're interested in. So it's a matter of raising the standard for everyone at the high school and to stop having it be this bare minimum. And every, just about every meeting, you didn't do it tonight, but you read the Portrait of a Graduate, and it's high standards. The very, you know, the, the mission. And the opposite has happened. So we, we experimented with the 20. And it has not had the impact that you, you thought. And, and so going back to 20 sends a message that we believe in you, students. We have high expectations for you, and you can do it. And we will assist any student who struggles. And you could see the number. There weren't that many kids, and they had many other reasons for not reaching those credits. Most many, that number one reason was truancy. So I really believe that it's time to bring back the high standards that our high school, the oldest one, is known for. And tonight, you can do that. We have 30, we have an eight-period day. In four years, that's 32 possible classes. And we're asking them to only take 20? By the time you're a senior, you only have to take English, gym, and maybe, and math. So what we start to see is a lack of desire to come. So we, teachers, see a correlation. And I just am trying to convince everyone to trust what the teachers have been saying and what the students are showing you. So please, support the 24. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair? I just wanted to ask, I mean, so the data we were given shows that 90% of our students take more than 24 credits. So it's a very small group that's not taking, that's graduating with 22, 23 credits. And, but it says some of these kids had part-time work agreements. They were Spanish speakers who came into this country and probably were at level one, right? This is my, my concern is for those 10 kids. I don't want to lose them. I don't want to lose them. And we've had staffing cuts. We've had cuts to EL certified, certified teachers. So do we have the supports in place for those level one kids in, in learning English, as just an example, to get, to make sure they're in content classes? Or they are able to learn? And that we're not going to make it too difficult for them to earn the credits they need to earn? Like, we, we can create high expectations and add rigor in all of our classes. But there has, we have to focus on the population we have and I, you know, and what our students need. So how do we ensure that, that they're getting that? And I'm, I'm concerned about the 10%.
Can I, can I speak just quickly to that?
Well, I'm finished, but I was directing my question to the administration.
Yeah, just to be clear, the students don't during their senior year take three classes or two classes. They, you know, the counselors have been instructed to put them in seven credits worth of classes. They can have one learning center. There were some exceptional situations. There were more than we would have liked last year. But it was under 30. And.
May I say something?
And, I'm almost done. And on the other side of it, you know, these kids don't get their 20 credits and stop. They have some tough times along the way, and they fail some classes in a lot of cases. And they have a chance to still make it. What my biggest concern of it all, and I'm, we can figure out whatever we need to figure out, but I'm, to, to know you still have a chance and not give up because there's just too much left to do and not enough time to do it, is, is what I just want to stay away from.
Mr. Chair? Just to react to what Ms. Winslow said. I'd like to see the data to see our, the correlation between our truancy numbers and the kids that are just barely making 20 credits. That would be a data point that I think would be very telling. As far as our Hispanic population is going, these kids, I mean, the growth, I just have, I just have Thompson numbers in front of me. But the growth in the Hispanic population is off the board. They, these kids are here to learn. So they, they're doing better than our white kids, our black kids. They, they are growing at .92%. So they want to achieve. They want to be in this country to learn and to take advantage of our opportunities. Now, if we don't have enough teachers, we have the ACN. We have the VHS. I want to see these kids prepared to take some of these classes. This is on the adults. Get these kids ready to learn. They want to learn, get them ready to learn. Do not lower the bar. We need these high standards. I can't believe that we're allowing us to dumb down, dumb it down to the point where, oh, these poor kids can't do it. Yeah, they can, if the supports are there by the adults. That's what we're here to do.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We also have an amendment. So I'm going to call a vote on Ms. Bowlen's amendment to change it to 22. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Can I get the ayes?
Aye. For now.
Six to one. All right. Next up.
So we, we're good? We voted on it? So it's 22 credits?
22.
We've all voted. It was six to one, correct? Thank you.
And I believe Principal Vance's recommendation was not this year, but next.
Correct.
Yeah.
6.2 is a discussion item. Thompson Middle School remediation plan, a potential move to grade five is Pell. I believe that was Mrs. Cullen?
Yeah, I'm raising, I'm raising cane tonight. So yes, the, the background was there. I think everybody has read it. I hope they have. We're having a lot of trouble with behavior issues at Thompson. I asked the police chief to give me a report, and the numbers are off the charts. How many times police go to Thompson? And that's because there's a lot of, kids are there. There's puberty, there's adolescence, there's lack of confidence in their academic skills. That's a big one that we can talk about forever. We've got to get these kids prepared to learn. So putting them back in an elementary model, which is, fifth grade is an elementary grade, to prepare them for advanced coursework. I'd like to see sixth grade as well, but I'm only going to ask for fifth grade tonight. I really hope everybody approves this because it makes sense.
There's no vote. This is a discussion item.
Oh.
Any more discussion from anyone else on the school committee?
Well, I'd like to hear from the principal.
That's my request as well.
All right, good evening, members of the school committee. A while back in consultation with the superintendent, we really looked carefully at some of the reasons why, I'll say some of the reasons why grade five might be better suited for a return to Pell. There are a number of reasons, or not a return. I thought they started here, but just the same. Thompson, in terms of its actual physical, not just the building, but really the exterior, one of our heaviest challenges has been recess. And Thompson, when it opened in September 2002, I was there. The actual land in the back was never really built for recess. And with grade five, recess has been one of the standout challenges. There have been others, but recess, I can speak to specifically, has been one of the most difficult things to maintain a level of safety and security for all of the kids during that 20-minute period of time. There are two 20-minute recess sessions for both grade five clusters. That has been a challenge. But we're a Thompson family, and the, the staff, and particularly, one person in particular who stepped up to, uh, stipend position to help out with recess. We have just been doing what needs to be done in the best interest of our kids to make recess as most, the most positive experience that it can be for students in the midst of a difficult situation on the outside in the back. But recess has been one of the most, most heaviest challenges for grade five. It's not the only one, but.
I hear you. I was there, too. I, I was the vice president of Newport Public Education Foundation when we redid Thompson Middle School. And I was also in the room in 2019 when the grade level choices for the bond were decided upon. And unfortunately, best practices were not followed. We should have built this building to accommodate the fifth grade. But now we can because there are 1,000 seats in Pell. And how many kids? Almost 700? Six, yeah. So we have a lot of room here. And I think that we would be doing our children a service to put the fifth grade here and think very carefully about the sixth grade as well. A K-6 model works in urban settings. We are that. We've got to get these kids ready to learn advanced coursework. We're not doing that. We're not doing enough. Yes, recess is important. Of course it is. But academics and confidence in their skill building is more so. So I think that having the fifth and sixth grade in the elementary school is important for kids to get the confidence in their math and in their reading, that they are not showing. up at Thompson with those skills. And bullying is huge. So we really need to focus on best outcomes for the kids, and I sure hope my colleagues approve this, and I hope we can take up the sixth grade soon. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dr. Broner.
Yes.
So if kids come back here, that frees up some space in your building, any thoughts about what might fill in behind that?
So, what, I'd like to just say that I shared with the superintendent, and she worked with me on this, a very succinct presentation about some of the pros and cons, and I'm not certain, I don't, I don't see that in front of you or on the screen, but I hope you receive that, or we can make sure that you receive that, because it, it really gives a very clear picture of some of the challenges that we faced, and with Grade Five.
So could we have you come back when that presentation, do that? I'd like, I'd like to see that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Can we vote on this?
It's a discussion item.
Shoot, why is it a discussion?
So, next up, she's new business.
So am I to, I'm sorry, am I to assume that this discussion will continue?
It will continue.
Is that right? Thank you.
Vote on it in September.
All right, new business.
Yes, seven-point-one. This is an approval for an inter-agency agreement with East Bay Community Action Program for Family Service Coordinators, and our superintendent's going to add a statement. No, 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 not yet, she's adding something.
I'd like an amendment to the contract, and I will, I've already mentioned this to Ms. Ruth, Christina Ruth, that any, any services provided by EBAC, EB, EB, sorry, EBCAP, getting tired here, that the superintendent approves the hires.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Winslow, any discussion? So I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven-two.
This is a motion to accept the social studies curriculum at, I believe this is for the entire district of Rogers High School.
No, this is K to eight.
K to eight.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Did you want to explain what the changes are?
Sure, we have a realignment of standards from RIDE, and our materials are, that we are purchasing, or would like to purchase, would align all of our K to eight classes with that. Our teachers are on board with that, we've had the conversations with the high school as well, to make sure that what we are proposing to implement, K to eight, will align with the high school as well. So I'd like to see us do this, I think it's an excellent opportunity for us, and we were able to split cost into two years, which will give us that opportunity to spread it out a little bit with our financial situation.
Anyone else? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Next up.
This is just a discussion item, for the change about a district tuition for 2026, 2027. No, there's no approval.
Yeah, could we, Ms. Jemaine, if she could, right now, I was just getting thoughts together, our cost is over twenty-eight thousand dollars per pupil, and people coming in to the VoTEC pay fifteen thousand dollars. I know it's the kind of agreement we have with the other communities, wins that agreement up, and what can we do to increase that price?
So the agreement always has been that there would be at least a minimum of a one-year's notice if we were going to ever consider a tuition increase, so that other school districts, like our own, would have time to plan and budget accordingly. Just a time in history, when I arrived here, this CTE programming, NACTAC, was actually on life support. And one of the charges was to build that program up, bring in students from other tuition, from other districts, and just build the program back up. With the assistance and hard work of Director Young and Carrie Clark, we've accomplished that, and we've done an excellent job, and we continue to grow. One of the challenges for the districts to send their children to Newport Public Schools was, at that point in time, the tuition was being based on the per-pupil cost, which is not the same for all districts. It changes, it fluctuates, depends upon your population, your total amount of money you spend in your district, and it's a math, a simple math equation. So in the end, a lot of sending districts were hesitant to send their students, because their budgets could not afford sending their students to CTE programs. So the Board of Superintendents for the CTE, led by Director Young, who oversees the board, decided, we're all here for all children, and we want all children to have every opportunity to explore different careers, different programs, but the budget money was an issue. So in order for a district to plan accordingly, we agreed that we would all keep the same tuition rate, so that all children would have all opportunities to explore not only our programming, but other programs, such as in Portsmouth and Middletown, and some of our students do do that. So I just wanted to give you that brief history. At this point in time, I believe the tuition, Director Young is fif, is it fifteen?
No, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand. So we have been at five-hundred-dollar increments.
Correct.
When and if a district believes, you know, maybe now's the time we should increase that rate. So now we're at sixteen, sixteen thousand.
Is that the county or the state? Is that?
That is each district.
No, no. Are we talking about a relationship, partnership agreement for sixteen thousand for the, anybody coming in?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and anyone we send.
Because other kids can come from other places, as long as they provide their own transportation.
Correct. And anyone we send out to our cohort, we pay the same amount, sixteen.
Sounds like the formula needs to be revisited by the state.
Actually, the state thought we were a model, we were a model formula.
I know, but...
And, may I finish, please? And it allowed all children to have all those opportunities. As a matter of fact, the Northern Collaborative, they decided they liked it so much, I believe they charged five thousand dollars, that's it, it's a very small tuition, so that all their children in each of their school districts have the same opportunity.
Right, that's what I was saying, I think it needs to be more balanced. If you say that some are only charging five, and we're charging sixteen, I think the state needs to tackle it as a complete revisit of how we do CTE and how we share services, that's what I'm saying.
I agree, I agree with that, too.
Well, how many CT students do we have presently? Right now?
Incoming or total?
Well, either way, incoming, maybe?
Why don't you do the easiest one?
It's about, every year, we're right around a hundred, hundred-and-nine incoming students. I don't, I'm not prepared to brief, but it's right around a hundred-and-nine right now.
And how many students do we send out?
That doesn't go through my department, it goes through another one.
Right, but it, it's not more than fifteen?
It's minimal, yes.
Fifteen, so there's a big difference there.
Correct, that's why we have a large revenue from it.
Yeah, yeah, huge problem. It's something we should address going up, our cost is going to continue to go, go up, we can't...
But you have to, you also have to remember, the reason, so all NACTAC, CTE programming, correct me, Director Young, if I say this wrong, we only offer those seats to empty seats, most of the time. Newport students have priority. So Newport students get the seats first, then every other seat that's opened in those program, programs are offered, and that's where we take our tuition kids, because if we, so if we raise our rates, and the districts can't afford to send them, then we're going to have empty seats, and we're not going to be getting any revenue.
Are we doing half-days anymore?
No.
No, we're phasing that out, yeah. One thing I just want to add is, we're one of the few career and tech schools that have direct access to the middle school students during the day. So like, we're actually the first to present to eighth graders in at least one of the schools. So we're talking to them about opportunities at Rogers before they even know about the opportunity at their own high school. They don't have to let us in to do that, many of my peers don't have that, that opportunity. So we make sure we get the word out face-to-face with these students, which does allow us, and allow them to know about the opportunities that they have here. And I, you know, if we raise the rates, we may be at risk for that, for losing that opportunity.
So, Ms. Jemaine just said that our kids are first, and we have a hundred students coming in with that. It seems to me they just increased the graduation requirements by two more credits, yet we have a hundred students we need to fill these classes. In a way, you, you would have a hundred less students, none of them was coming in. So you just, you just, they just voted to increase by two credits, yet we have a hundred less, a hundred positions, that you said they come from the outside into here, that were after our classes, after our students are full first. So we have a hundred kids coming in, and we have two more credits to put in.
Correct, that begin a year out from now. That's correct.
Good thing we're not a business.
But you also, but you also saw the numbers.
Okay, well, we're going to move on then. Do you want to say something, though?
No, I'm just here for any, Ms. Winslow, anything else?
I mean, I'm not a fan of the per-pupil cost for so many reasons. It's really hard to find a district that is exactly like yours, that has the same staff, being paid the same, the same number of students, all the same costs, it's, it's just a number. It's, it's a really tough thing to gauge a lot from, though. But if we are, is there a, curious, just out of curiosity, are there ways to monetize career tech programs, make it more of a revenue generator? I would say no, this is public education, but I don't know, you think about this all day, so...
And we do, we, so the number of students that are in each program generates Perkins dollars, which is federal funding, and categorical dollars, which is state funding. So if those numbers drop, then our categorical number will come down, and, and we can't charge, just everybody's clear, we can only charge there per people. So if ours, if ours is twenty thousand, and Middletown's is fourteen, we can only charge the fourteen, we can't charge twenty. And that's just part of the state, the state guidelines.
But they can charge us.
But, yeah, and then, so the seven students that are going to Middletown, they can, instead of charging us sixteen, they can now charge us twenty, twenty thousand, six hundred and thirteen.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next up is our subcommittee reports. We do get an email from you every week.
But, I was just, all I want to say is, the, on the twenty-second of, of August at ten a.m., everybody is welcome to come for the ribbon-cutting at Rogers, and you will be free to take tours, and it's going to be exciting.
Becky, were you able to respond to Mr. Rice's questions today? He's gone, but I think they're valid questions. Who's in charge now of the landscaping, once the ribbon's cut?
It's, it's still the SBC, nothing has changed.
Will there be any more building committee meetings? They've been in the dark for many months.
Yes, we're about ready to have one, we were waiting, we didn't want to have them without substantial things that we needed to do.
All right, motion to adjourn? So, second?
Second.
Ms. Winslow, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?